We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christina.
There was better Mr. Spengelbender at the Super Bowl here.
Did you want me to sing the National Anthem? Correctly.
No.
The mission statement of the town of Silver City. Silver City is the hub of an inclusive community settled within a small town that through guided growth honors and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage while facilitating jobs, health, and education resources such that the residents and visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area and high quality of life. Nobody signed up for public input. Council comments. Counselor Bedison, would you like to start?
Sure, thank you Mayor. Just wanted to let everybody know that on behalf of the mayor in the town of Silver City, I did attend a PRC hearing that was done on the PNM rate case in Albuquerque which was last January 26th and did read a statement on behalf of the mayor in the town that the mayor wrote.
And it was brilliant.
She just wrote it. On January 27th, I attended the Prospectors Legislative Day in Santa Fe. The mayor was there too and I'm sure he'll talk about that. It was interesting. We had a different procedure. We met with many of the lawmakers, which was really good for us. And on February 3rd, I along with, how many, 40 people maybe? Thirty-five to forty people, some of which are in this room, in the negative whatever degrees it was outside, we collected at the Downtown Arch for the Main Street singing of the last sentence of Downtown for their video. And all I can say is, it was pretty cold and we must have taken about 15 different takes. Counselor Thompson? Good group though. You're not going to recognize anybody in there though because we're all bundled up. No one really knew who anybody was because we're all bundled up. It was really cold. But that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson?
Still working on the animal ordinance. I'd like to hear from folks, especially, I haven't heard from any of the small breeders, so I'd like to hear from those guys. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Whedon Smith?
Nothing to say.
You sure?
Really?
Yeah. Well, hey, we always get a second round.
Counselor Morales?
No comments.
Thanks. Round two?
Nothing.
I want to welcome the Western students that are here this evening. They have, part of their class's assignment is to attend a town council or a county commission meeting. And I'm sorry that it had to be this one, but there's just not a whole lot of policy discussion, but we had a little visit before and I'll stay after and see if I can help you out any. Still accepting input from, on the essential air service. We have till, I think, the 22nd to put in our decision on essential air service provider. And of note on that is Senator John McCain out of Arizona has submitted a bill in the federal legislature to eliminate that entire program. So if you have the urge, give him a, give him a call, give our congresspeople a call. And if you feel like supporting the program, let them know that. The Counselor Bedison mentioned the PNM. We do have an agreement that has been proposed and then filed with the PRC. Is it even, is it public now that it's filed?
Yes.
So you've probably seen some stories in the press about it, but I have a brief on it. Looks like we will get a rate increase that's drastically less than what it was. We also got several conditions that we had requested and rate structures are in the agreement. So I think overall, we did very well. And this was truly a team effort with a large team. And from our, our town attorney, Mr. Scabron, who I can proudly say of all the creative ideas that we had in dealing with this, that came from him. And Counselor Bedison, who's attended many meetings that I couldn't. The town attorney from Almagordo, the mayor of Almagordo. Mr. Rennick is another attorney that worked with us out of Santa Fe. And I think all of us working together in the coalition, which was pretty much the four municipalities in Grant County, the county of Grant, Lorsburg, Otero County, Almagordo, and Rito. So we had quite a coalition to, to support and work for our citizens in, in the PNM rate issue. And I think we've, we've come to probably not the best that we would all want, which would probably be a zero increase, but a good consensus on where we, where we can go from here. The Prospectors meeting in Santa Fe was, was quite interesting. We met with Senator John Arthur Smith, who's the Chair of the Senate Finance Committee. We met with Senator Tim Jennings, who is the President Pro Tem of the Senate. We met with our local representatives, Representative Martinez and Senator Morales. We met with the Lieutenant Governor. And pretty much all of them said that the hold harmless is, is on the table, but is not in as critical jeopardy as we had once thought it might be. But it's not off the table. I understand there will be a bill introduced before the 17th that would eliminate the hold harmless over 15 years. And we don't know what, what the phase out of that would be until the bill drops. There's, there's tons and tons of bills out there. And once again, as I did the last meeting, I'll encourage you, go to the New Mexico legislative website. You can search by sponsor if you want to see what, what our locals are doing or anyone in particular. You can search by subject. And there's subjects from healthcare to bicycles that Jamie's really interested in. There's anything from mining to taxes to multiple bills on reorganizing the state government. And some of those are quite interesting to, to look at. You can also see where, where they're at, what they're doing, if they're moving through the, the process at all. You'll see that they've been in a committee and whether they were passed. If they receive a due pass, then they move to the next committee. If they don't, then they pretty well die right there. And if they're tabled, they're either dead right there or they are waiting for amendments and some sort of consensus by the parties, the stakeholders in, in that bill. So I encourage all of you to be active in that. I know our representatives and Senator want to hear from you and give them input on what's, what's important to you. And as I've said before, at the end, I will give a wrap-up, which won't be till the middle of March. And that's it. Anybody? Nobody? We'll move on? Yes?
I might suggest that you tell people what the consequence of McCain's bill to eliminate the EAS program, if there is no EAS program, if we have any air service at all, it's likely to be from a particular carrier with one non-pressurized plane. And the round trip to Albuquerque will probably be in excess of $600.
And, and that's actually coming from, from history that that's what was offered in Clovis, from Clovis to Albuquerque. And they had spoke of offering that, that same deal, but never actually did it from Grant County to Albuquerque. So what we have now is an average of $285, $75, something like that is an average one-way fare, which would go up to about 300 for one way, which essentially eliminates most people from, from using the air service to get to other parts of the world and do business in our, this state's business center, Santa Fe and Albuquerque. Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Hearing none. Approval of minutes of the special meeting, January 24th, 2011.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we approve the minutes of the special meeting, January 24th, 2011.
I'm a second.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the special meeting, January 24th, 2011. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approval of minutes of the regular meeting, January 25th, 2011.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Bedison.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting, January 25th, 2011, as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I second your motion.
There's a motion, a second to approve. Is there any discussion? There's a motion, a second, and no further discussion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, January 25th, 2011. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. Ann, would you like to give a report?
Yes, I'd like to mention that absentee and early voting is happening at City Hall. Early voting actually starts tomorrow. We'll have our vote tabulator machine in operation so they can cast it out through their vote machine. And this absentee early voting period lasts until February 25th. Our election is March 1st for Counselor in District 1 and Counselor in District 3. And I think that's about it.
Thank you. Chief? Anybody have any questions for the chief reference, the wrap-up that he gave, handed out last minute? Chief?
Actually, one question. I was going to do it myself, but do we know how many crashes there are at the Walmart in Deming, the supercenter?
Speak up a little bit.
I was just curious. I saw that there were a bunch of crashes at the Walmart here. And I was just, for comparative purposes, do we have any idea how many there are in Deming? It's roughly the same size, same area?
I don't have an exact figure, but according to the chief, when I talked to him about the issue previously, probably been about a year, year and a half. They have a, a higher private property crash rate at that Walmart as well.
There was one thing that Alex was going to bring up. He was going to point out that the rate of accidents on 180 has gone up significantly since the 180 project done by the state.
Is that attributed to design? Or?
If you take a look at the, the information that I provided, possibly, I'm not going to say yes to that question. It's always possible because of the, the location, those traffic lights being so close together, and that creates a situation. But if you take a look at the trail from 2006 all the way through 2008 that I was able to obtain from the New Mexico Traffic Safety Bureau, the number one cause factor for traffic crashes in Silver City was either first or second was driver inattention. So you have an issue where people are doing something that they're not supposed to be doing while they're operating a motor vehicle, they're looking around adjusting radio, we have a rearing collision, or they're not paying attention to the lights. That generally the cause for those. I don't have the stats right now. Captain Terry Fortenberry's looking into and pulling the reports on the cause factors for those 26 crashes to determine what, what actually was the issue there at those intersections. I should have that report fairly quick. Again, that's a handicap. We want to determine. We also took a look at possibly hiring a engineering firm to take a look at that, that section of roadway again, but that's going to be very cost prohibitive in doing that. We want to take every avenue. Clearly, we have an issue out there. Enforcement is not the only way of dealing with it. We, we want to look at every avenue on this.
Counselor.
One other, I'm sorry if you don't mind. One other, as a brainstorming and looking, it may be at some point in time we look at red light cameras. But again, there's a cost to that and it's something that the city council would have to decide on, but that's always an option because any one of you can sit out there in an hour and probably see four or five individuals run those red lights out there. One of the things that we asked the state to do was red all those intersections, which means for one second, the entire intersection was red or is red to try and cut down on those type of accidents. But we're still having accidents out in that area. Our fatality happened out at the 32nd bypass and 180 East. Contributing factors on that was a failure yield right away and also appears to be some speed issues as well. So that's why we spend a lot of time out there enforcing traffic. Again, not only do we spend time out there enforcing traffic, but also the state police spends quite a bit of time in that area as well. County, not so much, but they do, they are active on occasion in the area. So we have a lot of enforcement, so the enforcement is not the only issue here with these intersections.
Chief, I just wanted to say that that's one of, 180 was one of the things that was brought up at the Prospectors meeting with the Acting Secretary of Transportation Department. And one of the things I said is it was my perception that the lights out there turn red much faster than the lights in town. You know, that there's a perception, and it could be because of the proximity, but that they seem to be almost on-demand lights where a car will come up from, you know, the off streets and then all of a sudden the light turns like that. And that when you're going even at 35, that that can cause a problem with people either abruptly stopping or running what's now through a red light. So they did say that they would go back and look at that. Someone else mentioned that the lights, they didn't believe were timed, you know, to all at the same time. So they said that they would go back and look at that. And I think, I believe, you were, you were there?
I wasn't there.
What? You weren't there? Okay. There was also, it was brought up, I think that they said they were going to come back and work on the bike lanes at some point, that, because they've heard that people are concerned about the bike lanes. So, but there's no dates for any of those.
Right. And our looking at those intersections, the traffic lights, the, the change seems to be normal throughout the city, depending on the size of the intersection. Some of them may have a longer yellow, depending on that size of the intersection. An example of that is the Branch Club Road in memory lane. That probably has a one or two second longer yellow than any other because of the size. They do it by size of the intersection and also the speed. Unfortunately, we write a lot of speeding citations out there. People just haven't gotten the, that it's a 35 mile an hour zone, pure and simple. And that when it changes yellow, you either proceed with caution or you stop. We still have that issue in this town, and we've been doing the enforcement for how long. So again, it's, it's driver inattention. If they're not paying attention to light, they see it yellow, they're looking down, doing something, obviously they're going to run that red light and create a safety issue. So again, there may be an issue of going back and asking the state to redesign those side roads so that we don't have so many traffic lights out there and it comes in on frontage roads into one intersection. The, the original design, that's what it was, and that appeared that that was going to create safer environment. Currently, it's not safe out there.
Just, just a comment. I guess, you know, when you said that some of our intersections have a longer yellow, you know, by a second, I think that's what I mean by the perception that they go very quickly from green to red. And you've explained it now, it's the size of the intersection and the speed, but the, these are very small intersections with only these size, you know, roads coming in. And, I mean, I myself have come down under speed limit and find myself, you know, it's green as I approach the line and boom, it's yellow and it's red. And there's no way to stop without people hitting me in the back. I mean, so it's good that there's a red ball where there's at least that delay. I mean, it's not that there's an intention to do that, but it, once again, I think it's the, what you might have mentioned already, which is the proximity of these lights to each other. I mean, that's, that's part of it. There's quite a few in there.
Right.
Do we have any grants that cover that area for saturation patrols to reduce crashes?
Yes, we do. And through the next quarters, when we're breaking this down into quarters, we're going to do some impact enforcement, looking for specific violations on it. So throughout the next six months to eight months, that's what we're going to do, is we're just going to put people into the area and we're going to hit them. But again, we also want to take a look at, at the cause factors. Last year, we had the same issue with some of these intersections in 2009 as in 2010. So clearly, there's a pattern of safety in this area. Because of the speed, because of the proximity of the, the traffic lights, because of the, the basic setup, it's creating more work for us. And I've given the city council the information as to what, what the actual cost is per crash in the documents that are provided. Theoretically, through the National Highway Institute, that one fatality theoretically caused 1.2 million for everybody involved, including the city, insurance, et cetera. So it, it's imperative that we not only do the enforcement, but we also look at the, the engineering aspects of this and also the cause factors. If we need to take a step and, you know, look at further legislation to prohibit certain activities while operating a motor vehicle, so be it. We're going to come back and hopefully provide a comprehensive information to the city council based on what our study is.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting to, to pursue this discussion further. Obviously, we all watch the news. The red light camera question was bound to come up at some point. Thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you.
It's, it's something we'll, we'll have to decide and look at the studies and see how we interpret them and how they would actually benefit certain intersections. As well, they're on, they're on a state highway.
Just as a quick side note, I'm not advocating red light cameras, but at some point in time it might be prudent to at least test one, see how it works. The latest study shows it's not, you know, crashes and intersection up and down. So again, it might be a viable avenue later on.
But I think our problem's going to be that the state said you can't put them on a state highway, and they, they pulled them out of Albuquerque when they were on, it's just a street in Albuquerque, but it's actually designated as a highway and they pulled the cameras. So we may have our hands tight on that, which would save me a lot of headache in making that decision, but.
Mayor, and I don't mean to be blunt, sometimes I'm that way, but for public safety purposes, the state is going to have to buy into accomplishing something in this area to knock down our number of accidents. Those accidents, if you also noticed, we had an increase in, in number of crashes involving injuries. And, and the faster people go, the worse the crash, the more injuries we have. So it's prudent with, for the state of New Mexico, the highway transportation to address this issue with our jurisdiction.
Counselor Bedison.
Just a quick question. The state highway department's the one who sets the speed limit, correct?
Correct.
I'm just wondering, there's not, there's really no way to get up to speed between two of those lights, up to 35, before you hit the next one?
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if that in and of itself, I know that, you know, another reduction in speed, just because of the proximity of the lights to each other. Because I noticed they changed the speeds as you go out of town, you know, the 35, then 45, then it goes to 55, which is not the way it used to be.
In, in specific locations, we don't have speeding. Example, let me qualify that. We have speeding, but it's less than other areas. Example being between the lights at the Shreveport Mac and Ran and over to Rosedale Road.
I'm sorry.
That area's Rosedale Road and 180, right there by Walgreen. That's a short distance, so we tend not to have the, the excessive speed in that area. Where we, where we generally have the increase in speed is going up through, out here in front, all the way through the intersection of memory lane, down the hill to that first light, and then as they increase going up to Walmart and up the hill on that. The lights are not synchronized. You know, pure and simple, the lights are not synchronized. But I understand why they didn't synchronize the lights. We don't have the side traffic that other locations do. If we had frontage roads that, that led up to a specific light, it would be much easier to have that, that done synchronization. I don't want to be sitting at an intersection for three minutes waiting for the synchronization to kick through. But if there's nobody at the next intersection, say Rosedale Road, why would we want that one to change with everything else and impede the flow of traffic? So I understand why they did what they did, but they're not synchronized, pure and simple.
This is kind of brainstorming session that we're having because there's really nothing on the agenda of great importance, but, sorry, there's, I think what I would expect is to, to get a recommendation from you that we can then carry to the state highway department and go back and look and actually have the professionals to, to design highways, give us a report and give us recommendations. And hopefully, it's their highway, they would fund the repairs.
Thank you.
Thanks. No other reports? The first item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of requests for destruction of records from the following departments: executive, finance and accounts payable, finance, utility, billing, municipal court, police, and recreation center, public works. Quantity, 57 boxes. Ann?
Yes, I'm requesting your approval, the council's approval of the destruction of the 57 boxes from those departments that you mentioned. Each record custodian from those departments has reviewed the records carefully and determined that they've met the records retention schedule per the state. I've rechecked it and the state, I sent it to the state and they've also approved it. So we need your approval in order to go forward and I'll call up our bonded vendor to come pick up the records and do the shredding for us.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the-
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the destruction of records from the following departments: executive, finance, accounts payable, finance, utility, billing, municipal, police, recreation center, public works, for a total of fifty-seven boxes.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion stated.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of the rescheduling or cancellation of the regular town council meeting scheduled for February twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, and we need to reschedule for the twenty-first, correct?
Okay. So, do I put that in the motion?
Is there any discussion? Anybody? I think we've all worked out any issues, right?
At three-thirty P.M.
Three-thirty.
Three-thirty P.M. So, that is what the motion?
Make a, the motion would be to reschedule the meeting for the twenty-first at three-thirty in this location.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the rescheduling of the regular town council meeting scheduled for February twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, to Monday, February twenty-first at three-thirty P.M., here in the Grant County Commission, Commissioner's Meeting Room.
And I second the motion stated.
There's a motion and a second to reschedule February twenty-first. Is there any discussion? No discussion? Oh, this is really getting boring. There's a motion and a second to reschedule the regular council meeting from February twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, to February twenty-first, two thousand and eleven, at three-thirty P.M. in this room. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion stated.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.